I'd like to open up the special hearing for the tax classification. This meeting is being televised by PBD Access Television and recorded by our own stenographer. Clerk, would you read the notice?
Notice is here, but given that the City Council of the City of Peabody will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, December 6, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Franco-Weggen Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., in accordance with Chapter 797 of the Acts of 1979 as amended of the Massachusetts General Laws in order to adopt the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property for fiscal year 2019. PBD City Council Councillor Edward R. Charis, City Council President.
Thank you. Good evening, Councillors. I'm pleased to be here tonight to discuss the state of our city's finances. This is a very challenging time of the year for our financial team, and I want to deeply thank Mike Gingras, Mary Martin, Sue Antonellis, our Board of Assessors who are here today, Susan, Leslie George, and Brian Barrett, and all of their office staff for the hard work in preparing for tonight's presentation. Mike Gingras will provide a more detailed presentation to you; however, I did want to give you a brief overview. Every first week of December, the City Council meets to set the tax rate and to propose our 2019 tax classification. It's an important meeting because tonight I am asking you to shift some of the tax burden away from residential homeowners and onto our commercial and industrial base. We are very fortunate here in the city of Peabody to have a very strong commercial base, which allows us the opportunity to grant some relief to our homeowners. For that reason, it's an important meeting, but it's also a difficult meeting. It's never a good time to raise taxes. None of us ran for office to raise taxes. We each ran because we love our community and we want to make it better. I ran for office in part because I felt Peabody was stagnant. Our infrastructure, our buildings, schools, roadways, water and sewer systems, parks, were rapidly deteriorating because of lack of preventative maintenance and lack of investment. And I felt our city's reputation was suffering because of it. I felt we could do better. You felt we could do better, and together we have. I am very proud to report that our city's property values are higher than they have ever been. Our previous high was in 2007, when our property values totaled $7.5 billion, which are well ahead of June projections. And we fully expect next year's budget, excuse me. Our previous high was in 2007, when it was $7.5 billion. This year, we are at $7.9 billion, $400 million higher than that time in 2007. And we fully expect next year to be well over $8 billion. Our residential values have increased, again, higher than projected in June. Our single-family homes are up 8.4 percent. Our condominiums are up 8 percent. Our two- and three-families are up 18.9 percent. You will hear from Susan; she's certainly available to answer any questions during the presentation. But all those numbers are derived directly from sales of single families, condominiums, and two- and three-families in Peabody. This is explosive growth, and it is unprecedented in our city's history. And the good news extends to our commercial and industrial sectors. Commercial property value increased 3.9 percent, which is the largest increase since 2009. And our industrial property values have increased 6.6 percent. And why has this happened? Simply, our growth has been driven by the continued investment in our city that we have made together. Together, we have invested in education. Of course, the biggest investment is our new Higgins Middle School. State-of-the-art, a model for all other cities and towns, most recently Beverly modeled their middle school after ours. Incredible learning taking place in the Higgins Middle School. Our Chromebook Initiative, something I've talked about in the past. We made millions of dollars in investments to go to new learning technology so that every student from sixth grade to 12th grade would have a Chromebook. Every year, we've added, last year, we went from sixth grade to 10th grade. This year, the plan was to go from sixth grade to 11th grade. However, we made a decision in the school committee and the school administration to make it happen this year, so every student now from grade six to 12 has their own Chromebook. State-of-the-art, millions of dollars in investment for our students. And I can tell you right now, very, very few in eastern Massachusetts have the technology, the learning technology that our students have in the city of Peabody. And another investment that we've made is in our science and lab curriculum. Hundreds of thousands of dollars, we've together invested in a whole new science program from kindergarten through the 12th grade, and not just science, but intensified lab work for our students to develop their skills. We've made investments in public safety, most notably in the Peabody Fire Department. We have obtained three new fire trucks, and a fourth one has just been ordered. Our self-contained breathing apparatuses for every single firefighter that we have in our city, lifesaving equipment that is essential for our firefighters. Most recently, in the last couple budgets, we have added firefighter positions to our budget to ensure safe staffing conditions at each of our five fire stations. Previously, you may remember that each of our five fire stations had a minimum of two. Now, because of our investment that we've made, we have a minimum of three firefighters, including one ranking member, at each of our five fire stations. Again, an unprecedented investment in public safety that is paying dividends for our community, not only for our community, but for the life and safety of the firefighters themselves. We've made significant investments in economic development. For the first time in decades, real investment is happening in downtown Peabody. Our first brewery is set to open, and new apartments, restaurants, theaters, and shops are opening up in long vacant storefronts. Our vision for successful downtown is coming to fruition. Centennial Park continues to thrive. Vacancies are down, and investment continues, most notably the Jubilee Drive Project, which will result in over 125 jobs staying here in Peabody and hundreds of thousands of dollars in additional tax revenue for our city per year. We have great investment going on at our North Shore Mall, over $100 million of investment that is taking place now and going forward in the future as they rework their model and invest significantly in that property, which is wonderful news for the city of Peabody. Additionally, Barker's Plaza is undergoing a major renovation, $20 million-plus renovation that is ongoing. Pulaski Street, if you haven't driven by Pulaski Street, go see 58 Pulaski Street. See the investment that's taking place, the first time in decades that real investment has taken place in Pulaski Street. Just drive over there, see what Ed Greeley is doing over in that location, the shops and different stores that are coming into that property. It's terrific to see. This year, we had a 10% increase in new commercial construction permits. Last year was 580, and this year is 641 for commercial permits. That's just another example of the significant commercial investment that's taking place in our community. And of course, our investments collectively in quality-of-life issues here in the city of Peabody. Our recreational investments in parks, playgrounds, and open space continues with Crystal Lake, Tillies Farm, and the expansion of our bike paths. The planning and design are underway for our $11 million Central Street Improvement Project, which will modernize and completely transform this important and well-traveled city corridor. And last week's vote, the unanimous vote that I want to thank all of you, to commence the city of Peabody's Clean and Sustainable Water Infrastructure Plan, which will improve water quality and water pressure across our city and set us on a course to control costs and distribution to the next generation of Peabody families. And because of these investments we have made by working together, Peabody is without question a desirable community in which to live and raise a family. And that is just not coming from me, a proud mayor. We have become a national story. USA Today recently reported that Realtor.com, the leading website for real estate professionals in America, cited Peabody as the fifth strongest real estate market in the United States of America, the fifth strongest real estate market in the United States of America. Across our city, we are experiencing bidding wars and properties going well above asking price. When a home in Peabody is listed for sale, it lasts an average of only 20 days on the market, which is a faster sale rate than any other city or town in Massachusetts. Together, we are strengthening our future. People are talking about Peabody. Families are moving to Peabody, and businesses are opening here in Peabody, and we should be damn proud of that. I want to thank you. I will be here to answer any questions you may have, along with our finance team. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the always dynamic, Mike Gingras, who will be making his presentation. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know how I follow up after that. All right. So we're going to begin with the property values overview. The total valuations as of January 1st, 2018 were $7.9 billion, an increase of $584 million. That's 7.9% overall, greater than the prior year. And as the mayor said, these are the highest values in the history of Peabody. If you look at the green portion of the chart, this is the residential values, and they are ever-increasing proportion of the chart. And they're increasing more than CIP. We're seeing more overall shift to residential. Last year, that green portion was 79.1 percent. This year, it's 79.88 percent. And by comparison, in 2014, that was 76.88 percent. You see that the residential piece of the pie keeps growing, hence the reason for the classification to shift some of those values back to commercial. The next chart is the evaluation history from 2014. The top green line reflects residential values, which have been steadily increasing compared to commercial and industrial. In the past five years, residential values have increased $1.7 billion, or an average of $340 million per year. During this same period, commercial, industrial, and personal have remained relatively flat, increasing at $160.5 million. But this year, the CIP showed a good increase of $62 million, and that's 39% of the total over this period of time. The next slide is an analysis of residential values, and it breaks out single-family, condominiums, et cetera. Single-family homes are 71.1% of the value. There's 10,963 parcels, and those increase in value $352 million. Condos increased 8%. They're 9.9% of the value, or $47.2 million, and there's 2,276 units. Two-and-three families, the biggest increase of almost 19%, is 7.9% of the total value, or $80.2 million. Multi-families are 9.2% of the value, and they increase 6%. And vacant land and other combined is 8.9% of the value, for a total of 8.9% for the total value increase. Next slide is an analysis of the CIP values, commercial-industrial. If you go from left to right on the chart, you see the first value group is the commercial property, where there's been a steady increase, but then this year, you can see the jump in value at $45.2 million. The second group is the industrial property value, and it has the same pattern of growth, with a little bit of a jump this year at $16.7 million, or 6.6%. In personal property, with slight increases at $953,000 this year, 0.8%, but the total overall increase of commercial, industrial, and personal, significant at 4.09%. Average residential values for the past five years. This year, the average residential value is $393,800, an increase of $32,500 over last year. Since 2014, the average residential value has increased $106,000. That is a 36.8% increase over the five years, or an average of 7.4% per year. And we're expecting this to continue into next year, and as of January of 2019, we're expecting another 5% to 6% at least. The average CIP values on the next page, going from left to right, you see there are modest increases, with this year a significant $62,000 increase. And this has been driven mostly by hotels, large apartment complexes, warehouse space, and commercial condos. We're going from $1,445,000 to $1,507,000 on average. And of course, there's a big discrepancy from the mall to a local gas station, but this gives a sense of the increase. This next slide shows the new growth. And if you look at the shaded line, that's our new growth for FY '19. It accounts for 26% residential growth and 74% of commercial growth. The total equates to $1.072 million new tax dollars. And if you look at the bottom line, the averages over this period with residential growth averaging $24.5 million in additional value, and CIP averaging $32.3 million in additional value. And if you look at the last column, we can see that overall, the new residential and commercial development has consistently generated, on average, about $1 million in new taxes every year. Again, this goes back to the consistency and desirability of what Peabody offers. This slide takes a look at our budget data and the changes from FY '18 to FY '19. Our budget in the first line has increased $6.6 million. Our contribution to North Shore Essex Aggie, $124,000. Increase in state aid assessments is $231,000. And we've reduced our allowance for abatements by $500,000. Currently, we have $1.7 million in reserve for abatements, and our five-year average is approximately $660,000. So we're not going to add to that for this year, but I expect we may have to next year. Looking at the sources of revenue, our property tax levy will increase $3.9 million. Our local receipts will go down slightly by $100,000. Our state aid has increased $381,000. And due to the MWRA costs, we're going to increase money from our available resources by $2.2 million. And that's going to come from a number of different sources. $1,250,000 from unreserved fund balance, $400,000 from capital improvement program against debt service, $400,000 from health insurance trust to offset health insurance, $21,200 from the parking meter fund to fund the parking meter program, $1 million from insurance proceeds, and $1.250,000 from stabilization. And these are all votes we'll be asking for later tonight. The next slide breaks out projected local revenues. In the last column, you can see $8.3 million for motor vehicle excise. And even though it came in at $8.4 million in FY 2018, that year, we had $1.8 million in accounts receivable at the beginning of the year. That's, accounts receivable has gone down to under $1 million, so that's why I reduced it just a little bit. For the most part, the Department of Revenue requires that local receipts cannot exceed prior year actual revenues. And most of these line items are just identical from what we actually received, with the exception of motor vehicle, water and sewer, landfill, and billboards. The water and sewer, we took the vote last week, and I've increased that approximately 7.5%, which is about half of what we expect to collect between January and June. The, that would be up $990,000 over the prior year. And this is going to help offset our landfill revenues, which have been reduced approximately $1.1 million. And that's due to the completion of the Crystal Lake Project and slowing down of the activity up there. And then lastly, on the bottom line, before the total, the billboard revenues increased slightly. We have an additional, expect an additional collection payment and push that up to $500,000, for a total of $34,055,000 in local receipts. On the next page, we take a look at state aid, and that's increased by $381,000 from the prior year. Please note that the label on the fiscal 2018 column should say "actual" and not "budget." That was a typo. The state aid for schools increased $150,000, and the balance of the state aid for local government and veterans' benefits increased $230,000. The next slide shows the impact of classification, what we're here for tonight. In 2019, before classification, residential values equal 79.9% of the total value, where commercial, industrial, and personal equate to 20.1% of the total. When we classify at a factor of 174.65, we're going to shift 15.2% of that tax levy burden to CIP, which equates to $16.2 million. And this is the same percentage shift as we had last year, 15.2%. If you look down at the bottom of the chart, you can see the shifts from the prior years. If we look at the individual taxpayer at an equalized tax rate, they would have paid With classification, reducing the tax rate to $11.01, the tax bill would be $4,336,000, or a savings of $1,004,000 through classification. At an equalized rate for commercial-industrial, they would have paid $20,440 on average, and that will increase to $35,710, or a $15,270 increase for those CIP. Again, this varies greatly by actual valuation of property, large businesses versus small businesses. The residential tax burden will go from 79.9% to the 64.9%. Last year was 64.3%. And the, contrarily, the commercial will go from 20.1% to 35.1%. Next slide shows the history of our tax rates. You can see, because our tax, our property values have been increasing, the tax rates have been decreasing. There's an inverse relationship with that. The equalized rate in 2019 is $13.56, and once classified, the residential rate drops to $11.01, and the commercial rate also drops to $23.69. This chart shows stability in the gradual reduction of rates due to the increase in The next chart shows our average annual residential tax bills for the past five years. They'll increase this year by $195.24 on average, much less than our neighbors, Salem and Beverly, who've just recently set their rates to approximately $225 to $230. This represents a 4.7% increase for residential taxpayers. The average increase over the last five years has been $153.65, and those range from 3.5% to 4%. There's been no large fluctuations, and we have tried to maintain a very consistent residential tax burden. During the same time, remember, residential values have increased 36.8% or 7.4% a year. The CIP average tax bill gives you just an illustration of the, especially when you look at the chart, of the bump this year due to their 4% increase in value and a little bit larger shift than we have had in the past. The, on average, it's $858 increase. When I get to the next few charts, you'll see that approximately 500 out of the 700 commercial properties will pay $500 or less. This chart, the next chart reflects the distribution of how 2019 annual tax bills have changed. 49.37%, or 7,512 homes will see either a reduction, no increase, or an increase of less than $150 in the 2019 tax bill. 71% or 10,856 residential parcels will be $250 or less. On the commercial side, what I was just saying, 75.19% or 588 properties will see an increase of $500 or less. Again, we're maintaining affordability. The next slide shows our comparison with Essex County. Again, we're using the DOR figures, and Peabody in 2018, most of this slide is 2018. Whenever I had 2019 data, I plugged it in. We're at the second lowest annual tax bill in Essex County, just $23 more than Salisbury. We have the highest levy reserve of $10.4 million. When you look at the very last line of the chart, you'll see Peabody for 2019 will still have one of the lowest annual tax bills. Our levy capacity is going to be maintained at $10.4 million, and that gives us the ability to deal with future budgetary constraints that are going to lie ahead of us. And we, in Peabody, have approximately 30% of the total levy capacity in Essex County. The last slide summarizes our total assessed value this year, $7.9 billion. Our allowable tax levy under Proposition 2.5, which is our levy limit from last year, at $117,000. $110,700,000 plus 2.5% growth, 2.5% plus new growth, gives us a total available levy limit of $118,533,935. We could tax up to that amount. But our levy this year, we're going to be asking for $108,128,000. The difference, what's not going to be taxed is $10,400,000. Over time, the city of Peabody since 1985 has not taxed to the levy limit, and the total savings to taxpayers has been $222 million. So we're going to ask for a tax classification factor of 174.65, residential tax rate of $1.01, and a commercial tax rate of $23.69.
If I could, Mr. President, just to, I received a couple inquiries about Proposition 2.5, and I thought maybe we could talk a little bit more about that to make sure everybody has a clear understanding of Proposition 2.5. The levy limit, and that's the word we frequently use, the levy is the revenue a community can charge for real estate taxes. Now, there is a ceiling and a level in which a city and town can tax. It's 2.5 times, 2.5 percentage above what it was the previous year, plus you add in new growth. That creates the ceiling in which you can't go over to put forward your taxes. City of Peabody, and it's something that I've followed in the tradition of Mayor Turegian and Mayor Bonfanti, who I thought were strong financial managers, based and Mayor Bonfanti, who I thought were strong financial managers based on their history, we've worked very hard to maintain a high excess levy capacity. City of Peabody, we have never approached our levy ceiling, and that's been for a number of reasons. One, it provides us flexibility in case of changing circumstances, and also it allows us to reduce the taxes for our homeowners here in the city of Peabody. We have never had to ask for an override. I don't see that ever happening. Many other cities and towns do. If you look on page 17, the last column on the right, you will see excess levy capacity. Towns like Gloucester, towns like Lynn, Methuen, they have tens of thousands in excess levy capacity. If they were to do a big project, or if there was some sort of emergency, they would have to get an override. We in the city of Peabody, I think, have wisely managed our money to allow for flexibility should an emergency happen, or should we want to make a big investment as a community, we would not have to go forward on an override. We allow 10 million dollars of excess levy capacity, which means that if we wanted to move forward with additional taxes, we could tax up to $10 million more towards the citizens of Peabody, towards our homeowners. If we did that, that would be an additional $612 in taxes to our residents, to each individual homeowner. We made a decision as a community, as I said, I've followed along with earlier mayors in terms of what they believed in and their values in terms of handling budgets, and I really enjoy and appreciate having that additional money for flexibility, and also where we can, I want to save our taxpayers additional funds whenever possible. But that is the basic rule. I've provided everyone with the Proposition 2 and 1/2. I'm going to put that on the face, on our city website so people can have that additional information. But really, it is, you're allowed to go two and a half percent over last year's budget, but that does not include new growth. New growth allows us to increase that even more. But again, if you look, city of Peabody has by far the most excess levy capacity, again, providing flexibility, providing money for emergencies, and again, trying where we can, as best we can, to reduce the burden on our homeowners. We're here to answer any questions. Again, our financial team, Mike Gingras, city finance director, Mary Martin, our city auditor, our city assessor, Susan Antonellis, and our board of directors for the assessor's office are here as well.
At this time, I ask if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing and hearing none, move to the floor. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moved to receive late communication from his honor of the mayor regarding Proposition 2 and 1/2 explained. So moved.
Heard the, heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Counselor McGinn, could you just speak up a little bit? These are the old mics, so that, not as.
Do the best I can. Is that, is that working?
Maybe a little bit louder.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Gingras. The allowance for abatements on page nine, I think you explained that's permissible under the Municipal Modernization Act, right, that we can take that to zero. You had said, I think you said tonight, we have 1.7 million in reserve. I think the number was somewhere around 1.6 in June. Does that sound right?
Yeah, that has 1.7 million in reserve for abatements, and there's a test on the DOR as we're going through this rate setting process, where they look at the five-year average of abatements that we've actually issued. That number's come out to 660,000 approximately. We have to have enough to cover that by, according to their rules, and in addition to that, they look at what's outstanding receivables for potential other future abatements, and we're right at the borderline.
Okay. So based on current balances, no risk there?
No risk this year.
No risk this year, but probably should anticipate plugging something in there next year.
Some increase there next year, yes.
Thank you. I would imagine several counselors might have the same question, so I'm just going to jump right to it about the water and sewer numbers. And you did, you did mention that in your overview. The numbers that you plugged in here are a little bit lower than what was in the package presented at the meeting last week. And I think your comment tonight, I think your comment tonight was that, you know, based on the timing, there'll be a certain amount collected within the fiscal year, and I just want to make sure that, that I'm understanding that correctly than others, other counselors might understand why there's a delta between what was in the presentation that was based on five-year averages and what we're seeing here tonight in this presentation.
There's a different calculation. In the presentation, I did a five-year average. In this local revenue projection, I'm taking the actual revenues that were received, increasing them by approximately half of the rate increase, taking into consideration the six months. And we're not going to collect all of the six months within the six months, so I backed it off a little bit to come up with an appropriate amount.
Okay. So some of the, some of the fiscal '19 charges will actually be collected in fiscal '20, so there's just a timing issue that, that's... Regarding the, on slide 14, so the, the average number at 195.24, I think that the projected number in June was, at budget time, was 192.94. So we're, we're like within a couple of dollars of what you projected. Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
That's exactly correct.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other counselors? Counselor McGinn.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I just, I did have one other question, and I know you'd like to.
Counselor Gravel, you mind? Okay. Counselor McGinn, I just asked.
Yeah, I will do the best I can. Okay.
I think, I think all of us are speaking very loud. Just try to amplify your voice so that everybody can hear, but I think we're certainly not mumbling or shuffling. I've spoken very clearly as to my thoughts, and I know I spoke very clearly and loudly for everybody to hear, and I will do it again, certainly to say the same speech I would
Counselor McGinn, would you like to continue?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counselor Gravel, for your indulgence. I did have one other question with respect to the reserve numbers. So after these, after these proposed transfers, you had indicated the balances on each individual transfer, so the total amount of the reserve at this moment in time, is it about 18.2 million? Is that correct? That would be with unrestricted of 488,000, parking meter at 146, insurance at a million, stabilization at 3.7 million, employer health at 1.588 million, and a free cash balance of 11.265 for a total of 18.2. Does that sound right?
That, that's correct.
So, so these transfers that we are considering would total the...
4.3 million.
Yep, 4.321 million. So post-transfer, we'd be looking at a reserve total of about 13.9.
13.9, yeah.
Right? So, so 8% of the budget number of 174 million, which is a little below what, what the rating agencies like to see for the bond.
That's correct. Typically, they want to see closer or approaching 10% or greater.
Okay. So, and we've got some customary transfers that'll take place going forward, snow and ice, and some contract settlements, I think, that are in them. So, so we're going to be somewhere south of 8% as we exit the fiscal year. Is that, does that sound about right?
I would expect we will end up somewhere around 7%.
And if I could, Counselor McGinn, just to, it is a little lower than we would like it to be right now. Typically, I like to be well over 8% in terms of our rainy day fund, in terms of free cash. But because of the fact that I've always advocated to have that additional money available should there be emergencies, and I feel that the unexpected fire at Coolidge was that type of emergency that required us to dip into that reserve account, to pay some of those bills, again, to lessen the impact on our taxpayers, and again, I felt that qualified. So it's a little under where we would like it to be, and, you know, that may come into play with Moody's in our next review. That's why I felt the excess levy capacity was important to keep over 10 million. That's another important factor that Moody's looks at, and I think the combination of a slight dip in our reserve amount this year is, I'm hoping, offset by the increase in our excess levy capacity that we discussed earlier when we have our review with Moody's. But again, I felt the reason that, we've always advocated, and again, this was something I followed from previous mayors, was to have that additional money available as a rainy day account for emergencies such as this, and I felt that this applied.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that additional explanation. I, I guess my, my point in kind of wanting to understand where we end up is, as it relates to the decision we have to make tonight, to go any further into reserves would not be prudent at this juncture because we'd be bringing the percentage even lower, which, which again, runs the risk of us increasing the amount that we need to pay to borrow going forward for larger projects. So I would assume that was part of the logic for going no further with dipping into reserves.
That was part of the logic, and also, we do know that there's still some additional revenue that's going to have to be paid to MWRA because of that fire, because of our reliance for that period of time on MWRA and the high cost of MWRA water. We feel that we wanted to have some flexibility for next year's budget as well to factor that in, and that's why we thought that was the appropriate amount to ask for today.
Thank you, Mr. Gingras. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, you're welcome. Counselor Gravel.
Thank you. Can you hear me? I apologize. The, we haven't had this problem with the system before, but we lost our wireless system due to power surge, so we're back in the old days here. So I'll, I'll try to stay as, as loud as I can. You made a, a point on the CIP indicating the rise in CIP value. Actually, you made two points that were kind of confusing to me. One was, you said that the CIP has remained relatively flat while the residential's have grown, and you attributed that to the fact that more of the funding is being drawn from the residential's. So one way to fix that is to draw more funding from the commercial side. Did I, did I understand that right? But wouldn't the same argument apply that if the commercial tax rates, if the commercial values aren't rising, couldn't it be a factor of that the commercial values, the value of those properties aren't rising because they're not full and they're not producing rent and income, and therefore, the way that they're being assessed is lower?
I don't disagree with that.
Okay. I, I just wanted to, I'm not, I'm not, first of all, I'm not arguing about anything here tonight because this is no surprise to me. I have in front of me the budget that we passed in June, which basically set the levy limit, set the levy for us at that time, and I remember saying, remember, December's coming. It'll be like the, the ghost of budgets passed. You'll have to soon, you know, cope with the fact that we agreed to increase our budget, and at that time, the levy limit was posted right there and then, that we would be going to a raise of 107,442,000 in total levy, and that our commercial rate was going to be at 175%, which by the way, is the maximum allowable by law, so you can't tap the businesses any more than we're tapping them, and that the residential rate was going to be 11.22. The interesting thing to me was, is that the projection there was 107,442,540 is the raise, and the actual raise now is looking to be more like 108 million and change, a difference of roughly $686,000. So we're raising $686,000 more than we anticipated we would raise in the original budget projection. So if, if that's the case, what was the offset for the 686 that allowed us to balance the budget? Was that from the reserve, or is that from additional spending within the budget?
I think the, during, during the budget session, I had a higher estimated receipts at that time. I think we lowered that amount. I think we lowered the estimated receipts from the amount we had originally planned at budget time. And in addition, when I was doing those projections at budget time, I, I used a much lower value, increase in values for all the properties.
So as a result, I mean, to your credit, what you did was you shifted the factor down, the per thousand factor on the residential, from roughly 11.22 to, I think you're now looking at 11.09?
11.01.
11.01. And you shifted the 175% down to 1.74.
6.5.
6.5, close to the limit, which still allows you to make a higher raise, but it offsets the amount that the anticipated increase in the taxes that we would have realized on both sides had we kept what we budgeted for, because you legitimately could have kept what you budgeted for based upon the approval of that budget, correct?
Well, not necessarily, because after, when I'm looking at the estimated receipts going forward, I think, I think that, that changed and fluctuated a little bit.
Yet, the other thing that I think is, you know, Counselor McGinn brought it up in terms of the reserves, you know, we're at 18, of which it's really 13 after we do the transfers we're going to do tonight. And, you know, some concern about not being at 10%. Frankly, I don't have that same concern, and it's not that I'm a liberal or a crazy, but at some point in time, you have to look at real dollars, not just percentages, and so do the bond rating agencies. And 13 million in real dollars in reserve means that we underspent budgets through the years by a certain amount to equal that. And so that money is available to be used to offset emergencies like the problem with the water plant and the extra money that we had to lay out. So I, I feel there shouldn't be any hesitancy. hesitancy to safeguard the citizens who paid that money in, because that's their money, when you have extreme events. And if it cost us two million dollars incrementally in their water bills, because we had to buy from MWRA, we shouldn't feel any remorse about using two million of their money, which they paid in, that we're holding on to, earning at less than one percent interest, to offset that so they don't feel the impact in their pocket. So, to me, if the bond rating agency doesn't understand that, well, shame on them, because the real reserve is thirteen million plus ten million of untaxed levy. So, we have twenty-three million dollars available to us for a catastrophic disaster at any given time, plus our borrowing limits. So, again, I don't feel any sense of indebtedness to the bond rating agency. If they take us from, originally, we were double A to double A1 to A, A-plus, whichever ones they want, you're talking about infinitesimally small changes in your interest rate for borrowing, which, again, I don't think that they're going to look at that one factor and say, you know, you guys have failed, move on. Actually, we did with the money what was supposed to be done, offset the difficulties that come based upon these disasters, and that's a disaster. Now, the thirty million dollars, or thirty-six million dollars investment in the water infrastructure, that's a whole nother story. That's capital planning. That's something that we need to do. That's something that any mayor is going to face either now or in the future. So, tonight, I mean, I can't even challenge with a question about the rate or anything associated with the rate because we already voted to approve the budget, which had the rate built in. And I, for one, would like to see us maybe do the classification, if possible, closer to the budget so that people understand this is what's going to happen, even though you can file it in December, it should happen in June. Thank you.
I agree with that, but the only point is that the Department of Revenue doesn't have our values certified until November.
Counselor Manny Martin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me over there? No? Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mayor, for explaining Prop. Two and a Half. It only comes up annually, and so if people don't deal with that on a regular basis, it's kind of difficult for them and us to remember. So, I appreciate that reminder, and probably would be very useful each budget session. So, I appreciate that. And I do have a few questions. Abatements was already asked and answered. Pilot, page ten, payments in lieu of taxes. I see that it really hasn't fluctuated in the last three years, and although our taxes continue to rise, the payment in lieu of taxes that we're receiving from nonprofit organizations in the city has not increased commensurate with the taxes that residents are paying each year. So, has there been any discussion with those folks? I know it's, we have a lot of hospitals here. I'm assuming that those are mainly the folks that are offering payment in lieu of taxes. It just seems fair that that should increase since the taxpayers is increasing, you know, this year four and a half percent, and it hasn't, it's been very consistent. There has been no increases in payment in lieu of taxes. So, if you could address that, Mr. Gingrich or Mayor?
Good question, Counselor. You're correct. The hospitals are typically the ones that we're discussing when we talk about pilots, payment in lieu of taxes. What we've kind of done, and this has been a decision that I've made based on discussions with our department heads, Leahy, Boston Children's, what we've asked for and requested from them instead of some additional revenue was to help fund specifically, the big one is the student-based health center at the high school. What they've done is provided tens of thousands, even in the case of Boston Children's, they're providing a hundred thousand dollars towards services and supplies and needed funds for that operation. We've been trying to expand the operation at the student-based health center. We're actually looking to utilize that now in the middle school as well. So, although they haven't been increasing the dollars, they've been increasing significantly their contributions in services and in supplies and in real dollars to a lot of city initiatives, most notably the student-based health center.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that. Is there any way that you could incorporate those monies into this pilot number so that it's indicated?
That's a great idea. We can do that. That's a good idea.
Thank you. I'd appreciate that, because that's good to know. And I'm glad that they're doing that, and I commend you for reaching out in that regard. That's excellent. So, thank you. Let's see. The landfill, I think Mr. Gingrich mentioned, let me see what page that was on. Is it the same page? Landfill, yeah. We had one point, almost one point two million dollars in revenue last year with the landfill, and it's dropped significantly down to eighty thousand. Now, it's no longer in use, it sounds like?
Yes, I can address that as well. So, we were fortunate to get a permit from the DEP to allow for us to take in fill over at the landfill during the work going on at Crystal Lake. We took in fifty thousand cubic yards of dredged material, and we needed additional soil, clean soils, to cover up the dredged material from Crystal Lake. We were able to get a specific permit only for the project, for that work. That project now is complete successfully. We were able to get the fill we needed. We were able to make some revenue from the clean fill that came in from outside companies, but that permit was specific to the project. We did have a meeting three weeks ago with the DEP. It was a large meeting, tie-in bond, our Department of Public Works with the DEP specifically, trying to get a new permit to operate and bring in, again, clean fill. I'm very optimistic that we will be able to get a new permit to start taking in some additional fill and derive some revenue come the springtime, maybe after the winter. I just don't, that hasn't been decided yet. I asked Mr. Gingrich to be very conservative on that number. I actually do think we'll be able to get some revenue, not the one point one million we were able to get last year, but I do think we will be able to get some revenue higher than eighty thousand dollars. I just don't want to rely on that right now for this, at this particular time, till we get that permit in hand, but I'm very optimistic we'll get that.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And would this be fill from other communities? Would you be offering this service to other communities?
We haven't done that yet. When we took in the fill for the Crystal Lake project, it was from outside companies, and there was only certain types of fill we were able to bring in. It had to be approved by the DEP as to what type of fill. So, we haven't reached out to other cities and towns. That's an option we may have. But right now, with all the construction going on, all the work taking place in this market, in the economy, there's real money to be made from these contractors and companies that we think we can utilize the landfill more.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor, because that is really a significant loss in revenue. So, I'm glad that you've got an eye on it and you're focused on recouping those type of monies if possible. So, I appreciate that. Department of Revenue line, it dropped from three fifty to two sixty-four, and the year, it's on a decline from 2016. Could you, in 2016, it was four fifty-six, 2017, three fifty, and now it's down to two sixty-four? Could anyone explain why that number is on a decline?
I'm sorry, I'd have to go back and check and look at what the details are in that. I don't really remember off the top of my head.
Okay, okay. How about Medicaid reimbursements? That's down four hundred thousand dollars. Last year, it was eight hundred fifty thousand, and this year, it's four seventy-two, four hundred seventy-two thousand. Can you explain the drop in that?
That's a line item that fluctuates, and a lot of it's dependent, because the schools process this information, and it's depending on when and how much work, when they get it in and get it submitted. And usually, we get in that four hundred thousand dollar range, but I don't want to have to rely on that happening, so I kind of hedge a little bit on it, because I don't want to come up short.
Sure, and I'm familiar with the Medicaid line item and whose responsibility it is to do the work, because it is extensive amount of work in order to get those monies. And I know that sometimes it can be kind of a turf war with the, having been on the school committee, that whose work it is to do it and where the proceeds go. So, with such a significant drop here, if we could just make sure that, you know, it isn't a matter of needing more help to get the work done, that all the monies are being applied for and gained. That's kind of my point on that line. Thank you. On the state aid page, I do see, and I appreciate, there's been an increase over the last years repeatedly for state aid, but what has jumped for education, state aid reimbursements, but I'm noticing on the veterans' benefits, there was a drop by about thirty-five thousand dollars. I was surprised to see that. Is there any reason behind that? Didn't the state, am I reading that correctly? The state aid for veterans' benefits was reduced for us in PBD?
If you look at the prior year at one hundred and seventy, and then the year before, they had one hundred and twenty-four, I think we're looking at timing, because we get reimbursed seventy-five percent of costs, and they're submitted through a system through the treasurer's office, and they filter their way through back to us. So, I think it's a timing issue.
Okay, so there wasn't any purposeful reduction in state aid on that veterans' line? That's my concern. No, it's just timing and the money's coming in. Okay, thank you. And that makes more sense. So, thank you very much. Yes, okay. So, those were my questions, and thank you very much. They've been thoroughly answered. And a lot of my just very brief remarks will be similar to Counselor Gervell's. There are no surprises here. The mayor, in his executive summary when he presented the budget back in June, really laid out and forecasted these expenditures, right down to what, how much money he was going to use from the rainy day fund or the stabilization fund to fund the MWRA at one point two five million. That wasn't a surprise. He forecasted that. He let us know the employer health transfers that we're going to talk about tonight, the four hundred thousand into the operating budget for the tax levy, the unreserved fund balance of one point two five, he predicted that. So, everything that the mayor presented to us in June when we were formulating the budget has really maintained that course, and there are no surprises here this evening. My, right down to the one hundred and ninety-one average amount of tax increase for the average homeowner, I mean, that was even presented back in June as well. So, and earlier, the mayor, and I agree with you, Mayor, you, early this evening, you presented a very aggressive approach you have taken over the past year and the past few years in your initiatives, and you've outlined them tonight, and has been very aggressive, and you're moving forward with those things. And I will just repeat, I did not vote for the budget this past June for 2019. I have supported some initiatives, unanimous vote on MWRA vote that you just put forward in much-needed infrastructure. So, I do support some of these initiatives. I have not supported all of these initiatives. And I'll just repeat what I've been saying for the past few years, is I do think we need to pump the brakes a little bit, save more, spend less, and show a little fiscal restraint moving forward as the taxpayers really have been experiencing tax increases for the last several years. And at some point in time, giving the taxpayers a break is what they're looking for. And again, I do think we need to, moving forward, spend less and save more. And so, I will not be voting this evening for the tax classification rates as they've been presented. I appreciate the presentation this evening, but again, there are no surprises here this evening, and I appreciate the presentation. Thank you very much.
Counselor Rosenoff, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most of my questions have already been asked and answered, and I do agree with both Counselor Manning Martin and Counselor Gervell, that a lot of this was already addressed when we did go over the budget months earlier. The one question that I did have, where we are lowering our reserve to close to seven percent and where Moody does look at that, as well as other issues. I know when we were looking at the retirement account, one of the things that Moody recommended was us changing the classification from one specific account to a different one. Are we moving in that direction?
It's on my to-do list to create an OPAP account.
Yes.
And I'll try to get to that to you at the beginning of the next year. I said I would try to get that in the fall, but with everything going on, it's been hard.
Where we are under the ten percent and where they do look at a number of things, I know that that's one of the things that they specifically recommended. So, if we're not going to meet our ten percent, I just want as many other things as possible to maintain our bond rating. All right, thank you very much.
Counselor Melville, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Gingrich, when I first spoke to you last December after the election, before I actually got on the council, you had mentioned something to me that was very helpful, and I think kind of, at least for our perspective, is for every million dollars in the budget, what is it usually to the taxpayer? Would you say like forty-two, forty-three dollars? Around forty dollars per million that they would see in that budget. How much is that for a commercial? Not to put you on the spot, I know it's probably, it's one hundred and seventy-five percenters, around there typically. Yeah, I guess where I'm going with it is, to me, as a counselor, when we got the budget and we were looking at it, and I could see the six point eight million dollar increase in the budget, a third of which was related to the MWRA payment, we came to the conclusion that we kind of could see where this was going on that, and that essentially, most of the increase was cost of doing business, contractual salaries, and everything that you had listed out earlier, really. And I think steps have been taken to address some of those issues with regards to the water infrastructure, as we had talked about last week, that they'll, you know, an enterprise fund that, you know, no longer is the tax, the general fund going to be subsidizing, or at least as Counselor Gervell had really put together, is that it wouldn't be as much as, it still would have some subsidy, but not as much as it had before, so that at least the fees that are being paid by the residents and the businesses in PBD would not necessarily, would coincide against the general tax payment, I guess is the best way to put it. Just in general, I want to echo Counselor Gervell's comments with regards to kind of the timing. I knew as a counselor that it's a pretty cyclical calendar, right? You know that you're going to have your budget season in May and June, and then you're going to have your tax classification. Unfortunately, what's difficult about that is you basically have two separate conversations related to the same thing. And sometimes, the constituencies that are involved in those two things, as helpful as it is to have that conversation, it's very divided at that point. You're having a conversation about more spending in May and June, and then you get to December, and it's a discussion about what actually and it's a discussion about what actually has to be paid and when that's when people actually feel it. So I think, I appreciate the accuracy that was within the budget because I'll tell you, it would be very difficult for me as an elected official to be able to explain what I voted for on the budget in June and that not be the case when we did the rate classification here in December. So that is at least appreciated and as much as I knew it coming in, to live through it is a different experience as I'm sure those people watching at home can understand. My last, just my last comment is, you had said that PBD has a third of the, for Essex County, we have 30% of the available excess levy. That's a pretty substantial number. Is that based on, that is, what you're saying in this presentation is that that's a combination of the valuations that the city of PBD has, which was obviously higher than Haverhill and the tax rate that we have put that's less than Manchester by the sea as well, correct?
The last column on the right on page 17, that has all the excess levy amounts. And when you total them up, it's 34.9 million and PBD's is 30% of that.
Great, I saw that. I just wanted to make sure I conveyed that number correctly and it was kind of tough to kind of get all that in the remarks, but, so 30% of all of those communities up there, PBD represents 30% of the excess tax levy. Okay, very good, thank you.
Counselor Turkle, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike, I echo Counselor Melville's comments. The numbers are amazingly accurate, but I did have, as far as the water rate, the water revenues, I should say, when we talked in June, there was talk of a 7% water rate increase back then and ultimately, we didn't do that for the first six months of the year and we went to the 15%. And back then, you had projected, I know Counsel McGinn touched on this, I just wanted to get a better explanation. On water use charges, you had projected 6.2 million at the budget time and now total revenue is 6 million, which is, you know, obviously $216,000 less. And I'll just go with the sewage also is about $300,000 less than you had projected, but we also went up 15% on those rates. So being that it was originally proposed at 7% and we approved 15%, wouldn't we still be at the, shouldn't we still be at the same numbers that you had originally projected back with the budget? And again, I'll just say it's 6,216,000 for water and sewer was 10,396,993. So it's about a half a million dollar difference.
I took another look at it based on the actual receipts because at the time, I was projecting what the actual receipts would have been and then trying to estimate forward for the FY '19. So once the actual receipts came in for FY '18, which were lower than normal, there was a dip in that year, there was less usage, which was kind of fortunate because we were using MWRA water to some degree. So I revised my calculation and estimate for that, for both of those.
Okay, I get it. And another, Counselor Gravell had already mentioned this and maybe I had it backwards and I'm just, again, in the 2000, excuse me, in May with the budget, or June, you had projected the total tax levy to be 107,442,540. The actual levy proposed here is 108,128,000. So if I'm reading it right, we actually raised $700,000 or virtually $700,000 more taxes than we had anticipated. So if we took in $700,000 more, but we're still balancing the same budget, where did we lose money?
Part of it is what we just discussed about the water and sewer.
500,000.
Because we reduced that.
Okay.
There was change of values in addition to that.
Right, and I see that. I was trying to figure that out on the projected local revenues in 2019 because you're also, you know, you're also up $350,000 in motor vehicle excise taxes if I'm correct and $100,000 in Medicaid reimbursements if I'm reading that right. If no other counsel has any questions for Mike, I just, I did want to ask Susan Antonakis' question regarding abatements, just for the general public.
Absolutely. Can you just please state your name and address?
Susan Antonakis, 78 Newfields Road, Exeter, New Hampshire.
Susan, thank you very much. Mr. President, through you to Ms. Antonakis. Susan, thank you. I did reach out to you on Monday and it was a little confusing to me, so I figure it might be confusing to the public also. If you could just, and I know you've done this in the past, if you could just kind of briefly go over the abatement process
Absolutely.
For residents.
Tax bills will be issued the last week of December. That's the notice, what the new value is. If you disagree with that value, you have 30 days or until February 1st is the deadline to file an abatement to contest the value with the Board of Assessors. The process is that you file the application, the Board of Assessors has three months to review the application and make a decision on the application, whether it's, you know, approved that an adjustment is made lowering the taxes or denied and notice would be sent to the taxpayer. In addition to that, a site visit might be made to verify information on a property if there is questions about living area or any such information as that.
Thank you. And just to reference what prompted my call was, you know, on a personal level and then it forced me to look further into it, some values had gone up exponentially, some, you know, some anywhere from 80 to $120,000 and those were mostly multifamily, which fortunately or unfortunately, most of those are located in the South PBD area, so it directly affects where I live. Have you ever seen increases like that in the past? Because I, it's, I'm just wondering if that's a real number because for a home value to go up in 12 months, $110,000 or $130,000 doesn't seem realistic to me. And I'm just wondering if there's a, so basically what that equates to for a resident is, you know, anywhere from $1,000 to a $1,500 increase in taxes. And although it's a small number that we're affected by it, I just wonder if there's a better way to do that because I don't think that, you know, any resident should be affected with $1,000 or $1,500 in a given year. And I understand with the CIP factor, we try to do this the most fair and equitable way we can, but I don't see how that's fair and equitable whereas when you look at, seems like South PBD got hit pretty hard with this and even with the single families because there were a lot of sales in South PBD, a lot of new growth. You had Boulderwood. And I think what happens is those, if I'm wrong, those assessments through all the high sales then get transferred over to the neighboring houses because you assume that their values have risen. But when I looked around the city, some houses valued at 700,000 actually got a tax rebate, I don't want to call it rebate, actually reduced by $39, $40, $50, small amounts. But houses in the South PBD area on, you know, Cape, small Capes actually went up $300, $350. When I mentioned two families, 11, 12, up to $1,500. There's a huge disparity there. How do we prevent a resident from receiving a $1,500 tax bill? There has to be a way to do that because many of those two families are owner occupied, it's families and when you turn, that's an entire paycheck for a family. There's no other way to put it. It's, you know, if you make $1,000 a week, there's a week's pay gone and not many people could afford that. And I did support the budget, I still support the budget. I think that this council did a very good job going through that budget and the mayor did a great job explaining it. The money was spent, what we need to spend, I don't have an issue with that. I have an issue with, again, trying to be more fair and equitable on the assessment. So I'll let you answer after my long rant.
Okay, well, our whole job every year is to assess property at market value each and every January 1st. So we're looking for this fiscal year, fiscal '19, we're looking at an assessment date as of January 1st, 2018, almost a year ago. So we're looking at sales that occurred in calendar year 2017, of which we have over 760 valid sales. And basically, what we do is we analyze the sales that have happened in the open market between buyers and sellers and we apply statistics to all the other properties based on similarities, location, style, neighborhood, size, in order to come up with an estimate of value as to what that property would be worth as of that assessment date based on the sales that had occurred. So the values that we've arrived at for fiscal '19 and specifically for the multifamilies are based on sales of multifamilies, twos and threes. Last year, for example, our average value of a two-family was $356,000. The average sale price of a two-family was $466,000, $100,000 more than it was assessed. That indicates the need for an increase. We have to assess property at market value. The three families, the average value of a three-family was $389,000. The average sale of a three-family was $523,000 for calendar year 2017. So that's what we do is we analyze what has already happened out there and apply that knowledge to all the other properties. Because if these multifamilies are selling for this amount of money based on location and style and size and condition, then logically, the other similar properties would sell for that same amount of money. That's how we arrive at the values, using statistics.
Right, and I appreciate the answer and I guess the only comparison I could use is if 50 blue houses happen to sell, you can't value all the blue houses the same. So I know that, you know, as far as high traffic areas, you take the 10% off. Are there any other considerations that you make for properties located, whether they be in a different area?
No, just really a traffic adjustments for heavily trafficked streets, we do. Either a 5%, adjustment on the land value or a 10% adjustment on the land value.
Okay, and thank you very much for your help this week, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Before I open it up to ask, see if anybody else, I just wanted to make a point regarding a small piece of information that I don't think any of us really knew at the beginning of this. So on the federal level, the tax code changed. So if you itemize, you can deduct up to $10,000 between your property taxes, your personal taxes, your excise taxes and your, excuse me, your mass state income tax. So what I think we really need to be careful of, and it happened with me and I speak from a personal perspective, when your property taxes go up above $5,000 or $6,000 and your income tax on the state level is $5,000 or $6,000, just right there, you have $12,000, you just lost $2,000 worth of exemptions that you could file for your federal tax. That's another significant loss to a resident and a homeowner. And, you know, it was never that way. And the two families are a little different, you can actually divide the taxes amongst. But I just want us to be aware that in years past, we had already always, there were no fees, cities and towns tried to get away from fees and they tried to make it part of the tax, your property tax, you know, for trash and other things. And that was so that residents could go at the end of the year and then write these things off, submit them to their accountant. You can't do that anymore for the most part. Now you have that $10,000 cap in, I just wonder if maybe we as a city need to look at the way we, if it's more equitable to residents to charge it as a fee and they may be able to deduct it in that sense? Or, you know, I'm not an accountant, all I know is what was given to me was that I can only deduct up to $10,000 with the above. So I'm wondering if we take some of these out of what would be considered a tax so that people can fully deduct the complete $10,000. I may be completely off base, I just, I would, I'd just like people to be aware of it that 10,000 is the max and most of our residents are above that between their income tax and property tax. Thank you.
Does anyone else? I just had one question or two questions for Susan, since she was up here, do you mind? Just to hit on the subject that you spoke about and just so the public understands, am I correct in understanding of your explanation before is that this timeframe that you've given with the taxes bill, tax bill going out and you have up to February 1st is not set by PBD, this is a state law, state ordinance? Am I correct on that?
Correct.
Okay, I just want the public to be clear that the, that it's not something we set a timeframe. And when you talk about, if someone submitted a application to question the value and you take it all in consideration, has it ever gone up?
It's good, yes.
So, and I don't mean to be smart about it, but I'm letting people understand that if they're saying, hey, I'm afraid to go in because maybe it would go up, that is a possibility? Thank you. Counsel Sassla?
Just while she's here to make her Susan, the number of abatement requests last year, do you know what they were offhand? Approximately?
Approximately 130?
And out of the 130, what percentage would you say the, they did get an abatement?
Maybe 30 or so.
And also, you had said that there were 760 sales in 2017 and the way I haven't wrapped up 2018, but I have to assume you got your thumb on the number a little bit. Can you tell me what it is in PBD this year to date?
It's about the same at this point, but we haven't wrapped up the December sales, obviously.
Thank you.
Counsel O'Neill, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, I'd like to ask a question to Mike. You know, I know we're certainly discussing the 2019 budget tax classifications tonight and as we're looking certainly through that to shift more of the residential tax burden to commercial. As I see it and as was discussed, it looks like we're right up or bumping up against the maximum CIP factor. I guess all things being equal, next year we would have to shift more to residential if we were currently at that maximum CIP factor. Is that accurate?
Well, we're proposing 174.65. We can go up just a little bit more to 175. So there's just a little bit of room.
Okay.
And that, this year, that would equate to five cents more for the commercial property payers.
Okay, you answer that, it's just we're bumping up, we don't have a lot of runway on that right now, right? I call it runway, this microphone is terrible, sorry. We're right up against the cap.
Yeah, we're right up against.
Okay, thank you, that's all, no further questions, thank you.
Counsel Sassla?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. On page number 10, regarding the revenues, the landfill revenues, what I want to understand is, I know, I totally understand the explanation that you gave, Mr. Mayor, about the tip, I think they call it tipping fee and we got those revenues, but where are we with Covanta? Are we, is Covanta, are we done with them or where are we with them?
That's what, no, Covanta, there's some income. I don't think it reached the levels that they had hoped for or that we subsequently would obtain. The 80,000 is for that, for Covanta's operation. We're estimating based on years past, that's kind of the ballpark of what we would expect. Again, I think realistically, we'd be able to add to that based on revenue coming in for the landfill, hopefully with the permit. But in terms of Covanta, 80,000, that's kind of the estimate we've been working with.
Counsel, can we use your microphone?
I apologize. We were hoping, if we go back about three years ago, we were hoping for a little bit more, weren't we? Is that my recollection, okay?
Absolutely, we were hoping for more.
And then billboards. I know my only question I have is, we ramped up, we got some funds ahead of time. When one of the companies wanted to come, they paid us ahead of time. I guess my only question is, is that $500,000, is that now going to be a consistent number or will not fluctuate over the coming years?
Good question. Yeah, that's what we anticipate going forward. That should be the annual revenue.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, my only comment is I did not vote for the budget, and, you know, this is my third term, and I had some very tough conversations with some constituents. You know, when I look at the budget, and I look at the houses, you know, really, beside the two families are getting hurt, and the three families, when I say hurt, they're going up, hopefully they'll be able to recoup some of that rental increases, and that's just a process of the market. But when you take neighborhoods like Centerfield and Rowing Hills, that have, you know, $350, $400,000 houses, those are the ones that are, in my analysis, that are going to get hurt also a lot, because it's 2017 sales. I know 2018, it's going to affect the houses probably on the higher end, and it's not an easy conversation to have, when some, you know, you know, it's very easy for some people to say, well, just tell them it's time to move out of Peabody, maybe it's time to sell the house. I'm certainly not going to say that to someone who's been in there. Someone can suggest that to me, and I did have a constituent say, maybe it's time for you to tell them. I'm not going to tell them that, it's a very uncomfortable conversation. My concern is that we're in a very precarious situation. You know, history tells us that we can only grow so much, and then we're going to contract, then grow again. We've had a great, great growth in this country, in the state, and especially in the city. So going forward, you know, I will be looking to both my fellow councils and myself, and the corner office, to say, how can we maybe, where are there some places that we can maybe rein in the budget? Where are some places that we have left vacancies, unfilled, but kept those positions on the books? I think it's time that maybe we have to look, if it's not filled, that maybe we don't fill it, and we cut back some money. Because I said, I don't think, I don't think the, I don't think the conversation is going to be that easier, any easier next year. And I hope that we can continue to sustain this growth. But it's been, it was a challenging year, when those bills came out in February, and never, since I had been in office, had I gotten the calls, I had, I have expressed that, I personally told him, and I appreciate, and he listened to me, but I let him know back early this year, and I expect I'll get him again. But I'm concerned, I think in the future, we have to look at, you know, are there ways that we can look at citywide, anywhere it can be, whether it be city side, school side, where are there ways that we can rein in some of this spending, so that we can continue to keep our reserves? And I agree with Counsel Gervell, at some point you have to spend it, I get it, I really, and I agree with you in that regard. But as I said, I think that going forward, you know, 2018, we know what, home prices certainly did not go down, and Mike, you've told us, those assessed values, they're going to go up. But for someone, you know, I'll close with this, when the person calls you up, the homeowner, and he says, that's great, but if I'm not selling, and I don't want to move out of my city, what good is it to me? It's not an easy question to answer, I understand, for none of, for any of us it is, but I think that we have to take a look at this, and try and maybe figure out some ways to kind of rein it in a little bit. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Seeing none, hearing none? Entertaining motion? Counsel Gervell?
Thank you, Counsel President. A series of motions this evening. First is to vote to adopt Chapter 126 of the Acts of 1988, optional additional real estate exemptions for 2019, as presented by the mayor, so moved.
Could I interrupt? There was a late communication on that.
Yes. This revised B? Kind of a mo, I need a motion on acceptance of the revised B.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we'll take that.
Heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Counsel McGinn?
Yeah, on the motion, Mr. President, can we just get a brief explanation of the change? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Counsel McGinn, thank you. I did want to mention, you have a series of exemptions, veterans, those with disabilities, other exemptions. I thought that an increase, just based on discussions we've had in the past, that a, an increase of 10% to afford those that need those exemptions, that rely on those exemptions, was an appropriate action to take. I'm recommending that we increase those exemptions by 10%. Again, just to help those that need those exemptions, our veterans, those with disabilities, and others, again, that rely on that additional money. So I'm proposing, in requesting, a 10% increase for those exemptions.
Any comments on the motion? Hearing and seeing none? Roll call.
Counselors O'Neill?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sassla?
Yes.
Mitsoulis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Razagnall?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Gervell?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Counsel Gervell?
Motion to, is to adopt Mass General Law 59, Section 5N, allowing veterans, in exchange for volunteer services, have the tax bill reduced by up to $500, so moved.
You heard the motion, roll call. Counsel Melville?
Just real quick, Mr. President, just on this, this is a new program, I'm not sure if the mayor wants to comment on it, but the, it's to basically allow current veterans in Peabody to, right now we have a veteran shuttle service, which I actually saw in action today in Jamaica, the Jamaica Plain Veterans Fairs Hospital. Mike Schultz was actually driving the van, so this is essentially to give those that are currently volunteering their time to drive fellow veterans, this happened to be, and he was driving a 95-year-old WWII veteran to his doctor's appointment, give them the opportunity to recoup some of the cost of actually doing that volunteer service, they have to buy lunch for themselves, things like that, these are four or five-hour round trip service, trips. So this is essentially just for that purpose, and then also to try to recruit more people to help these folks out, who are currently volunteering, we need more people to be involved, they need some reinforcements. So basically, this is a new, this is a new initiative, and so I just wanted to make sure people were understanding what this actually was. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
And just to add to that, Counsel Melville, you did a great job explaining it, and I just wanted to credit you, this was a proposal you had brought forward. We've been very fortunate, it's something I think that all of us take great pride in, I know all of us were a part of making this happen, in an effort to take care of our veterans, and helping make sure they get to their medical appointments. We were able to get the program, we have a van now, we're hoping to get another van that we can utilize to help. We have a number of veterans now that are assisting, as Counsel Melville said, but we're hoping to recruit more, and we wanted to try this as an incentive, and as a program, to see how things go moving forward. But it's a great source of pride for our city, again, that we have the ability to take to Jamaica Plain, to West Roxbury, to, what's the other one?
They're going to Bedford.
In Bedford.
Yeah.
That we're able to take our veterans to those locations. So it's a great program, and I appreciate, Counsel Melville?
Anyone else on the motion? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselors O'Neill?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sassla?
Yes.
Mitsoulis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Razagnall?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Gervell?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Next series of motions have to be approved before we approve the DOL levy. These are transfers of funds. The first one is to request a transfer of funds from account 1035901, which is the unreserved fund balance, the amount of $1,250,000, to the FY 2009 operating budget tax levy, account 1039201, in the same amount of $1,250,000, so moved.
On the motion? Roll call.
Counselors O'Neill?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sassla?
Yes.
Mitsoulis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Razagnall?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Gervell?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Motion to transfer $400,000 from the CIP unrestricted fund, account 3035901, to the FY 2019 operating budget tax levy, account number 1039301, in the same amount of $400,000, so moved.
On the but, on the motion? Roll call.
Counselors O'Neill?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sassla?
Yes.
Mitsoulis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Razagnall?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Gervell?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
The next is to transfer $400,000 from the Employer Health Trust Fund to reduce the FY 2019 tax levy, account number 1039301, so moved.
On the motion? Roll call.
Counselors O'Neill?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sassla?
Yes.
Mitsoulis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Razagnall?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Gervell?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Thank God for this old system, it's the only thing running right now. Motion to transfer $21,200 from the parking meter revenue fund, which is account 27000033001, to the FY 2019 budget account number 100000039201, in the same amount of $21,200, so moved.
On the motion? Roll call.
Counselors O'Neill?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sassla?
Yes.
Mitsoulis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Razagnall?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Gervell?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
The next is a motion to transfer funds from the insurance proceeds, in the amount of $1 million. The proceeds fund was 270000356044421, to the FY 2019 budget, which is 100000039201, for the same amount of $1 million, so moved.
On the motion? Roll call.
Counselors O'Neill?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sassla?
Yes.
Mitsoulis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Razagnall?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Gervell?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Help pay the water bill. The request is to transfer from the stabilization fund, $1,250,000, from account 50000032150, to the FY 2019 budget, the account is 100000039201, for the same amount of $1,250,000, so moved.
On the motion? Roll call.
Counselors O'Neill?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sassla?
Yes.
Mitsoulis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Razagnall?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Gervell?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
And finally, the request is to transfer from the skating rink retained earnings account, which is account 43000031101, an amount of $74,600, to the reserve for FY 2019 budget, account 43000031102, the same amount, $74,600, so moved.
On the motion? Roll call.
Counselors O'Neill?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sassla?
Yes.
Mitsoulis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Razagnall?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Gervell?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Vote to approve the tax classification to adopt the residential factor of .811949 for fiscal 2019, with a CIP of 174.649%, so moved.
On the motion? Roll call.
Counselors O'Neill?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sassla?
Yes.
Mitsoulis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Razagnall?
No.
Turco?
No.
Melville?
No.
Gervell?
No.
Charis?
No.